I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Buffy. Councilmember Glazer.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you.
We have a couple of presentations tonight. Our first one is Potter Valley Project Update by Craig Tucker, who is a consultant for Humboldt County. Welcome, Craig.
Hello. Members of the council, appreciate you giving me opportunity to be here tonight and share with you a project that the county's been working on with a lot of other folks that will affect this community and folks down here on the Lower Eel. So I'll just tell the story. First, my name is Craig Tucker. I'm a consultant for Humboldt County. I've come from a, I have a good bit of background in FERC relicenscings. I've worked on the Klamath relicensing for about the last sixteen or seventeen years. And so I was really excited to take some of the things I learned on the Klamath and come down here and apply them to a FERC relicensing project that's kind of just getting underway on the Eel. So just to help with a little bit of the geography that you're probably really familiar with, so the Eel River system flows mostly to the north, but the Potter Valley Project connects intimately the Eel River basin and the Russian River basin with a diversion that shunts water through the mountain ridge over to the east fork of the Eel River. And that's at the Cape Horn Dam. That water is diverted through a powerhouse with the purposes of making electricity. And just a little bit of history, the first, that point of diversion, the Cape Horn Dam was built in 1908. But Cape Horn Dam's a pretty small dam. And you'll see here, when we talk about the storage of these facilities, there's a storage for where it was built at, and then it's how much water it stores a day. So these things are pretty quickly filling up with rock and gravel and sediment. And so they don't store as much water today as they did when they were originally built. But folks wanted to be able to run this diversion year-round. So the Cape Horn Dam creates a very small reservoir, and it runs out in the summer pretty quickly. So a few years later, they built Scott Dam, which inundated and created Pillsbury Reservoir. And it's significantly bigger. It's a 130-foot structure and has around 66,000 acre-feet of water stored behind it. What this does is this water can be released slowly over the course of the year, so you always have some water you can divert over to the other side of the hill, which has become very important to agricultural interests in Potter Valley. So kind of, I'll run through this timeline, and I'm kind of going to focus on the recent events as they've transpired. But as I was noting, the project was constructed between 1905 and 1922, but it really wasn't until 1979 that there was a mandatory fish flow release from the dams. So they would operate these dams to maximize water deliveries for a long time, but as the fisheries collapsed further and further, the National Marine Fisheries Service required dam releases to meet the needs of salmon and other fish in the Eel River. And there were several changes over the years, but starting in about 2007, the flows we see released from the dam today look a lot like the natural flows you would see in the Eel River in the summertime if the dams were or were not in place. And I'll show you some graphs that highlight that point in a few minutes. What was interesting is these dams are owned by PG&E. And just like all privately-owned power projects in America, they have to get a permit to operate from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And those permits detail everything from how much electricity they can produce, how they have to maintain their facilities, and in this case, how much water has to be released from the dam for the purposes of fisheries. These permits can last 50 years. So usually 30 to 50 years is how long a permit lasts. So we always say a dam relicensing is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make significant changes to a hydropower project. In this case, PG&E originally signaled that it wanted to relicense the projects for another 50 years. Then, kind of in the middle of that, PG&E signaled they wanted to auction the project off to the highest bidder. And then soon after that, PG&E declared bankruptcy and decided they were going to orphan the project. In other words, they're willing to just give them away at this point. And so what does all this mean? So that's what I'm going to get into. First, I would just like to make the point that, from the perspective of the Eel River interest, the Potter Valley Project has really benefited the Russian Riverside at our expense. So they've diverted water from this watershed over to the Russian River. We didn't get a benefit from that diversion. The electricity produced is very minimal. I think it's a nine-megawatt project, so it's almost a negligible amount of electricity. But it's had pretty profound impacts to Eel River fisheries. So we've gotten virtually none of the benefit, but all the burden of the project up till now. And then the benefits to the Russian Riverside are steadily diminishing. So as I was mentioning, starting in 1979, fisheries agencies started requiring more water be left in the Eel River for fisheries. That means there's less water being diverted to the other side of the hill, and it means less water's running through turbines and less electricity is being generated. So whereas they used to divert 150,000 acre-feet of water a year on average, they're diverting about 65,000 acre-feet a year on average today. And you can see the electricity, amount of electricity being produced has dropped by more than half over that period of time as well. The Van Arsdale, I just want to show this picture of Van Arsdale. So fish are supposed to be able to get past Van Arsdale. Between Van Arsdale and Scott Dam, there's actually some pretty good habitat for fish. But you can see that at high-water events, which happen virtually every winter, the fish rack and the fish ladder at Van Arsdale just gets full of gravel. So just maintaining this piece of the facility to pass fish has become problematic and expensive. All right. So luckily, our local congressman is taking a keen interest in the project. And if you think about it from Congressman Huffman's perspective, he represents both basins, so both the Eel Riverside and the Russian Side. And so he convened what he calls an ad hoc meeting, ad hoc process, where he posed the question to us, is there a win-win? Can we do something that maintains the water supply reliability of Russian River interests that dramatically advances the interests of the Eel and advances fisheries restoration goals that people over here have? And so as he convened this meeting, he articulated there are co-equal goals. So improving fish passage and fish habitat is equally as important as minimizing adverse impacts to the water supply to folks on the Russian side. And so we set out to answer this question. And so we kind of start by sciencing this thing out. So the first thing you figure out, I want to make the point that as currently configured, with current rules and regulations, the amount of water flowing through the dam in the spring and summer is about the same that you would see whether the dams are in place or not in place. And so the red line is actually recorded river flows, and blue line are modeled flows if the dams are not in place. And so you do lose some of these high-water events in the dead of winter with the dams in place. And it's not to say that that has no impact on the fish, but I just want to make the point where the dams don't create this big giant reservoir that keeps the Eel River wet in the summertime. It's just not how they're operated, and it just doesn't store enough water to do that in any event. So the ad hoc convened two groups, a water supply group and a fish passage group. And so the water supply group wanted to figure out, well, if you made changes to the dams, if you remove one dam, if you remove two dams, what does it really do to the water supply on the other side of the hill? And what they found was, you could remove the larger dam, but maintain a wintertime diversion at the smaller facility and meet the water needs of Sonoma County Water Agency. But what you don't do is, for the farmers in Potter Valley, they're depending on summertime diversions, that they need to divert water in the summertime. So just having wintertime diversion creates a problem for folks in the Potter Valley Project. And I'll just leave, I'm going to come back to that because I think that's one of the key issues we'll need to resolve before this whole thing is resolved in a way that meets everyone's interest. And then the fish passage group, it's like, if we want to get fish upstream of Scott Dam, and we know there's over 100 miles of historic salmon and steelhead habitat above Lake Pillsbury, what's the best way to get them up there? So they looked at removing the dam, they looked at installing fish ladders, they looked at trapping haul, they looked at a partial dam removal. And the fish passage report, which will be coming out in just any day now, basically, whoops, I think I pressed the button that told me not to press. Basically, the fish passage report tells you what you would really expect, is that the most efficient way for getting fish to that habitat above Lake Pillsbury is through dam removal. We thought that partial dam removal, like, could you make the dam smaller and that be effective? Well, the fact of the matter is, because it's filled in with the gravel, most of your water storage is in the top portion of the reservoir. So making the dam smaller, then you're left with a reservoir that doesn't store very much water. So all this information is available at the Huffman's Ad Hoc Committee website. Can I keep going?
Yep.
All right. So now what's PG&E up to? So I would just say PG&E's behavior is kind of, I didn't press a button. I'll sit it down here. PG&E has really made it difficult for us because it's like Lucy's holding the football for Charlie Brown, right? So they're going to relicense, and nope, they're not going to relicense. They're going to auction it, nope, they're not going to auction it. So now they've done what we call, they've made their intent to FERC that they're going to orphan the project. And it's really like they're laying the keys to the car on the table and asking if anybody wants to drive it away. But if you drive it away, you have to pay for all the costs to get the new permits, bring it up to modern environmental compliance. It's not like this thing's free. This thing's a bunch of liabilities associated with it. So whoever takes it over is going to have to be able to do that. So go back, just go back one. So, but when you orphan a project, it creates an opportunity for someone else to step in and tell FERC, well, maybe we want to take it over. So a coalition formed featuring Humboldt County, Sonoma County Water Agency, the Mendocino Inland Water Power, Mendocino Inland Water Power Commission, Round Valley Tribe, and California Trout. And we read a letter to the FERC and said, we're going to try to put a plan together to create a new regional entity that would take over the project, but it would have to meet these co-equal goals described in the Huffman Group. So can we take it over and by doing so, advance fisheries restoration in the Eel and still meet the water supply needs of folks on the Russian Riverside? So the first step in that, and I think you can go one forward for me. Oh, and this creates a new timeline. Let me get to the timeline in a sec. So what this group's going to do, we've all put in some money to hire a team of consultants to develop a feasibility study. So the question is, you know, what does it cost? Could we form a new entity that would move water to the other side of the hill? Can we monetize that water? Can we use that money to pay for the upkeep of the dams? Could we remove some or all the infrastructure to advance fisheries restoration? And so what we expect to have is early next year, a feasibility study that kind of lays all this out, both looking at the biology, the engineering, and probably most importantly, the economics. Can we make this thing pencil out? And so if we can, then the next step would be to file a new license application with FERC, and we'd have to go through a whole new NEPA process where we'd have to draft the license application, take public comments. And so we're talking about being on the front end of a several-year process to get to the end. And so all I can say right now is, I don't know how this is all going to pan out. I'm pretty optimistic that, because PG&E has moved orphaned the project, if nobody did anything, the likely outcome is that FERC would order a decommissioning. So FERC could order PG&E to decommission the whole project. The alternative is for us to find a way to keep some or all of this project in place, provide a water diversion to the Russian Riverside, and remove enough of the project that we improve fisheries conditions. But it's going to take, there's a lot of homework to be done before we figure out that outcome. And then, yeah. And so this is what the timeline looks like. We explained how the feasibility study finished in April. That would lead to ESA consultations and completions of additional studies. If we defined it to be feasible, we would have to file a final license application with FERC in 2022, and that would restart a whole new FERC process. So that's where things stand. I think I probably threw a lot of information at everybody, but I'll stop right there and see if you guys have some questions and I can make things more clear.
Any questions?
I have one. Without the diversion, would that cause more flooding during high waters over this way?
So you just have to remember that the dam is so high up in the watershed that overwhelmingly, the most of the water in the Eel River comes in below the dam. So the dam doesn't, it does virtually nothing to attenuate flooding in the Eel River Valley because it's so high up in the system. So most of your accretions come in from tributaries below either of these dams. But I think that's a critical question for people living lower into the river.
Has Lake County taken a position on all this?
Yeah, Lake County, I think Lake County is really interested in Lake Pillsbury. They see that as a recreational asset to their community. They can't decide if they want to be a part of this process or not be. They've been debating it in county supervisor meetings. So it's unclear to me. They actually passed a resolution supporting joining the planning agreement group, but they haven't, to my knowledge, actually appealed directly to the group for admission into it. So I don't know what they're going to do, but I do think they're, you know, they're really worried a lot. They're landowners with cabins and homes around Lake Pillsbury, so they're obviously very concerned. The only, one more thing I would add, and I think it's sort of a million, multimillion-dollar question, is what's in the sediment trapped behind these dams? And so oftentimes, when you remove dams, particularly in the Sierras where there's a legacy of gold mining, there's a lot of mercury in the sediments, which is a, you can't just release a whole bunch of mercury through a dam removal. So one of the things that's going on this winter is California Coastal Commission's have funded a study to go in and drill core samples in the sediment for analysis. And I think if it's, you know, if there's mercury contamination, it's going to heavily impact the economics of any outcome, but that'll be, that'll have to be reconciled before any dam removal could move forward. And I'd be happy to come. I think there's, probably every few months, there's going to be a new chapter in this story. So I'm happy to come out here and give you guys an update as often as you would like. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was I?
If you would like, come up to the podium, please.
Could you folks please speak up? We didn't understand anything that this gentleman said. And it's kind of hard to follow him. You can't hear what's going on. Thank you.
It sounded like the microphone was on. Yeah? All right. Our next presentation is Eel River Valley Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Update by Hank Seaman, Humboldt County Public Works.
Before Hank gets started, I'd just, I'd like to thank the county. They've really taken the lead in addressing the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the requirements. And thus far, the city's really participated more as a part of the Eel River Groundwater Working Group, which the county convened to think about strategies and how we address this. So Hank really has taken the lead, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to have Hank come down and really explain to the council what's happening. And it could really have some big implications for the Eel River Valley.
So good evening. Hank Seaman, Humboldt County Public Works. Just as Craig was talking about, a lot of developments that have been happening in the upper watershed the last few years, there've been several years of developments down right across the river. And so I'm happy to be here and give you an update. We're talking about the Eel River Valley groundwater basin, and this is a map that shows that area. So it includes all of the Ferndale bottoms, Lolita, and it goes upriver to Rio Del and Scotia. And then it goes up the Van Duzen, past Hydesville, actually all the way to the county park. So this is 73,000 acres. This is the groundwater basin. I'll just go through kind of the summary of the story and then show some diagrams and maps with a little more information. So in 2014, the governor passed this groundwater legislation. And prior to that, surface water and groundwater had really been managed separately. But the reality is that they're physically interconnected. And so this was a step forward in terms of trying to understand groundwater. So then, in Humboldt County, that law applied to our groundwater basin. It ranked high enough that it needed mandatory compliance. And so the county, we formed a working group with stakeholders. So, you know, municipal water supply is a really important use of groundwater, agricultural irrigation, and then the environmental benefits of, you know, groundwater and the effects on interconnected surface water. So we had a series of meetings. There was an opportunity to get some grant funding, to do more technical study, and really try to understand, get a better understanding of the basin. There was two options in complying with the law. One is taking the step of forming a new groundwater agency and also developing what's called a full groundwater sustainability plan. And those, that timeline is still in front of us, but there was another option if we could, if, looking at the evidence, if we felt that the basin had been managed sustainably for 10 years. And so after we did the study, working with the working group, we came to the conclusion that our basin had been managed sustainably. And so we submitted an alternative plan in 2016 that we thought was the best fit for our basin, and it involved annual studies and monitoring and reporting and checking for any changing conditions. So I'll just go down to, two months ago in July, the State Department of Water Resources announced that they were not going to approve our alternative plan. So they felt, and I'll, they felt that there wasn't enough evidence provided that our groundwater use is not affecting the interconnected surface water. So I'll show a little more about that. So the next step is that we'll apply for state funds to do more extensive studies and planning. And by January of 2022, we'll need to submit this larger groundwater plan. And we'll need to form a groundwater sustainability agency. And there's some different examples of what that could look like. And maybe I'll just, you know, this is a summary of the groundwater law. There's a lot that goes into it. When we think about groundwater, we think of, you know, water supply and storage. You also have to be aware of seawater, you know, infiltrating groundwater and making it unusable. So that's a concern on the coast. And, you know, you could pump groundwater enough where it affects the land. That's not a problem for us, but that's a big problem in the Central Valley. And then it's that interconnected surface water that, you know, we need to comply with the law. We need to demonstrate that we're not significantly affecting surface waters. This is just a map showing other groundwater basins. The yellow and the, yeah, the yellow and the orange show the medium and high priority basins. And we're really an outlier on the coast. In fact, you have to go all the way down to Santa Cruz to find another medium priority basin. So unfortunately, the law was really written for the Central Valley and the big concerns there. We're pulled into it because of what's perceived as how much water we use and its importance. Not because there's any evidence of problems or overdrafting, but really just the significance of the resource. This is a picture from January 2017 at Fernbridge. This is a picture of the river helping to replenish the aquifer. So that's a really important physical process. And then this is a picture from August of 2014. This was at the end of a drought year. There was only 21 inches at Woodley Island this whole year, and this is when the river went dry. So really dynamic conditions. You know, this is the important time of year thinking about groundwater, you know, during the irrigation season and when it's dry. One of the things is, because there hasn't really been evident problems of groundwater use, there has been limited data collection. What we do have is some records just from twice-a-year measurements in six or seven wells that go back to the 50s. And you can just see the blue kind of up and down is, you know, fall and spring changes, and they're very flat. So, you know, this was a good evidence that, in terms of groundwater use, you know, we have this record of really stable conditions, but this was only two measurements a year. And it, these aren't measurements that show during the irrigation season. This is just a map to show our, where we've collected data. We worked with a lot of ranchers and dairymen to collect data on existing wells, and we installed some new monitoring stations. This is such a big basin, and it's a complex system. We're just, we're trying to advance our knowledge, but there's still a lot we don't know. But I just want to show, we put in a monitoring well on the Ferndale side at the end of East Ferry Road, and then we have a station in the river that's just north of Eureka Ready Mix. And this is the kind of data that we'll need to start collecting. This shows continuous data, not just twice a year. And one of the things you can see, you know, the green line is the river, and the purple is the groundwater in that well. And you can just see how interconnected they are, that when you get the winter storms, water levels go up in the river, and, you know, for these wells that are near the river, they go up right away as well. And then you can see during the dry summer season, they really come into balance. And so they're really interconnected. You know, looking at that dry season, we didn't see any evidence that pumping was causing any drawdown of that monitoring well or the river. But that was, you know, that's one snapshot in one location. So, you know, we have stable groundwater, but, you know, the late summer flows in the river are a concern. And there's, basically, the state is saying that it's the obligation of local agencies to demonstrate that the groundwater use is not adversely affecting the interconnected surface water. The good news is, is that there will be some state funding to help us do additional studies. We need to work quickly to submit a grant application. It's going to require groundwater computer modeling, which is expensive. You really have to be careful of how you use models. They don't tell you everything that's happening, but they can answer certain well-posed questions. And so, you know, we want to work with, you know, the city, other water users in the basin to really develop a good study plan. So we're asking the right questions and getting defensible answers. And then we'll need to talk about what the Groundwater Sustainability Agency looks like. You know, I think what I propose is, you know, I'll keep having dialogue with city staff, and, you know, maybe in a couple of months, we'll come back with further discussion on that matter. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions?
What was the true intention for the state to actually come up with groundwater studies? Was their intention to be able to actually charge municipalities' locations a fee because that has a value? Do you know for sure?
I don't believe that's their intent. I think their intent is, you know, looking at historically problems that have occurred elsewhere in the state with overpumping and wanting to create a framework to avoid those problems statewide. And also, you know, thinking about changing conditions where, especially on the coast, where right now, there's no evidence of seawater intrusion being a problem. But we want it to stay that way, and the state wants it to stay that way. And so I think they also want this preventative framework. I don't think there's an intent to charge fees. I think the challenge for us is to figure out how to really streamline this management and minimize the costs. That's definitely one of our objectives.
With this creation of the agency, will Fortuna have a seat at that table much like all the HCOGS and the different coalition groups that come together?
I would hope so. And we can, you know, I can talk with staff about some different models we've seen. There've been, these groundwater agencies have been formed elsewhere in the state, so we have some different examples. But I think, I should just say that Fortuna is the largest groundwater user in the basin for municipal use. for municipal use. The amount of water that the city uses is about 10% of what is used for agricultural irrigation. So, you know, the bulk of the water is used for irrigation, but in terms of municipal use, the city is the biggest water user. But there's also smaller users. There's Palmer CSD, Lolita CSD, Riverside CSD, Hydesville, and then Deloro for Ferndale.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Hank.
Our next item is oral comments from the public. If anyone would like to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. You have three minutes, and please be advised that we cannot deliberate on any, or take action on anything that's not on the agenda. Welcome.
My name is Nina Olson, and I'm a resident. I live on Kinmar Road in Fortuna. I always learn so much when I come to the city council meetings, and this was very informative. Thank you very much. I enjoyed hearing all of this. My reason for coming to the mic is that I would like to ask you to approve the Fortuna Senior Center Bingo Permit application. That's one small fundraising area that we have that's...
So Nina, we're supposed to wait until we get to that item on the agenda before we talk about it? Anyone else? Hi, go ahead.
I'm Marlene Chanel-Petajek. I live also here in Fortuna. I have a question about your comment. If we can't stay through the whole thing, can we make a comment now?
Sure, go ahead.
I also live here in Fortuna, as was mentioned, and I'm here to ask your approval of the Fortuna Senior Center Bingo Permit application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. My name is Myrna Farrar. I also live here in Fortuna, and I also hope that you will pass the application for the senior bingo. It's very important for seniors to have some place that they can go in an evening and visit with each other, as well as have a little bit of fun. So it's very important to seniors. Thank you.
I'm Joanne Hanbuck from Hydesville, and I'm here about the bingo permit also for the senior center because, like the other girls have said, it gives us something to go, place to go and visit with people and to help raise money for different things. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing that, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have seven items, consisting of city council minutes, report of disbursements, approval to a full-time pay schedule, authorization for document destruction, approval of a contract with Mercer Fraser for paving, apply a line for street striping, and DCI for minor concrete maintenance and repair. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
No.
All right.
Make a motion. We accept the consent calendar items one through seven.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next one is just a quick discussion on the League of California Cities' proposed resolutions for deliberation, just to make sure we're all on the same page for the voting delegate at the conference. So they seemed pretty straightforward to me. Did anybody have any questions or comments about either one of them? Trying to find my page here. Can't find my bookmark. There we go. So there were two resolutions. One was an amendment to the Rule 20A, which means that's the money that we're using for our undergrounding on 12th Street. And so they want to extend that not only to programs like that, but to the areas that have high wild ant fires, so that they can underground some of those overhead facilities so that they don't cause forest fires. That's kind of summary, right? Would you agree with that? Quick summary? And the other one is addressing the water quality issues resulting from the contamination in Mexico flowing into the United States into California. So my vote would be to support both of those, and I just wanted to get everybody's confirmation that that's the direction we should go, whoever ends up voting there.
Sounds good to me.
Kind of a consensus. Okay, that was quick.
One comment, Mayor Long. When I was at the last League of California City City Manager Conference meetings, I had opportunity to tour the border and actually the Tijuana River where it flows out into the Pacific Ocean. And I forgot what the name of the city is that's immediately north, but they have a lot of days where they can't open their beaches because of the pollution. And you look at the Tijuana River, and they have trash capture. It looks like a landfill or recycling center that just gets washed down in a torrent, and they have these big nets that catch it. So I know it's really impacted one of the other cities, the city south of San Diego down there. And so I think, even though it might not seem like a big item for us, those cities are desperately hoping to have these resolutions, particularly that one passed. So I think they'll, they'll really appreciate it, and that was a subject to some discussion during that, that tour. So I'm glad to see it made it to a resolution for the league, and hopefully that gets some traction.
That would be pretty disgusting to see that, huh?
Yeah. And I have pictures. I probably could have put them in there, but anyway, if you want to see them, feel free to stop by my office.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our next discussion item is Sunrise Rotary Flags on Main Street, city participation, participation and flag storage. We have a staff report.
Yeah, so this is an item that I added to the agenda for discussion after being approached by representatives of Sunrise Rotary, looking for a solution for storing the flags, for their flags on Main Street program. This program, I'm sure as most of you are aware, includes a placement of flags along Main Street during specific holidays and events, and it's staffed by volunteers, you know, not only, not just Sunrise Rotary, but others as well, other volunteers throughout the community. When the flags are not in use, in the past, they have been stored by the Rotary in the city's building at 280 12th Street. And so right now, the city's in escrow and expects to have that building sold around the end of the month. And so the, the city doesn't have another suitable indoor location to store the flags. Right now, they're stored in a trailer that has an open top, and it, it needs to be inside to protect the flags in, in, in the current configuration of that trailer. And so, you know, one potential solution that we have thought of and discussed is, you know, perhaps a purchase, purchase of a cargo trailer with a covered top would be something that the city could store outdoor at the courtyard or somewhere else, and you could, you could build some racks on the inside that would store the flags. We looked into the cost. It's about $6,000 to, it would cost about $6,000 to buy the trailer and to retrofit it for flag storage. You know, we mentioned this briefly. We're mostly working with Rick Senter, who, you know, is, is, is the responsible person with Rotary, who's been behind the project. And it seems like they'd welcome a solution like that. But one of the things that we haven't received is, you know, so far, the city hasn't been too involved otherwise in providing a location. You know, we had some observation. We waived encroachment permit fees, but so far, the city hasn't been a full-fledged partner in the flags on Main Street. And I will say that a lot of the feedback that we have received is that the public does appreciate the flags. They, they like to see them displayed at the different holidays and during the different events. And so, you know, I didn't feel comfortable proceeding or, or using any budget to, to pursue a solution. And so I just wanted to get some direction from council on, you know, what their opinion was. Should the city be putting general fund dollars towards finding a storage solution? You know, should we go back to rodeo, excuse me, back to Rotary and ask them to, you know, maybe help come up with, you know, part of that? I, I just wanted to get a sense where the council is and if they'd like to see us, you know, put some time or propose budget to go towards a new storage solution. And I know Rick's here. He may want to say something about that as well.
Do you want to make a comment, Rick, before we talk? Come on up.
Mayor Long, council members. City Mayor Merritt, thanks for having me here. Little background on this whole thing. I know a lot of you aren't really aware of what, how this happened. Started about probably five years ago when Regan Candelaria was the city manager. And he was trying to think of something to beautify and make the city more attractive. And he called a meeting of several community members, not just Rotary members, and we had several meetings to come up with some ideas. We decided on three ideas to pursue. One was planting trees on Main Street. One was develop a square at Ninth and Main Street with arches and pavement and all that sort of thing. We had several meetings on those two items. I think Merritt, you were at some of those, I think, on the Ninth Street thing?
Yeah, I had maybe one.
At least one. Anyway, there was a lot of effort put into those things. A lot of plans were made, a lot of research was done on those two things. The tree thing kind of fell through from, from a little resistance from the downtown people and maybe the garden club. The DeVoy Pickers Square on Ninth and Main kind of fell through because it's pretty expensive and really involved. The other, the third thing that we came up with was putting American flags on Main Street on certain holidays. And so that's the one that, that kind of took off. And four people formed the major committee on that one. Three of those happen to be Fortuna Sunrise Rotarians. We call it an American Flags on Main Street project, not a Fortuna Sunrise project. And during those meetings, though, we decided how we're going to do this. We did a lot of research on how other cities did it. We decided the best way to go is drill holes in the sidewalk. We actually put sleeves and plugs in those. Our flags are 12 feet tall. We have three by five, very expensive, good-quality flags, made in America, by the way. And the city's only real involvement was walking the streets and planning where to put the flags. We had to be careful of sidewalks, signings, and that sort of thing. Councilman Mike did a lot of that walking with us. And as a result, in two, in two phases, we now have 168 flags on Main Street. About 163 of those have plaques on those in memory of, or in honor of somebody, and a lot of council members have a plaque. The only real city involvement, other than walking the streets with us, has been storage and a place to work on these flags. There's a lot of assembly acquired in the first place. And it was easy at first because we had the Fortuna Motors Garage down there. So Regan says, well, we'll use that, and then when that's done, we'll find something else. So that was the city's involvement. And it's not just a, a Sunrise Rotary project. There have probably been like 200 different people put these flags in and out. It's been Fortuna Sunrise, Fortuna Rotary, Seratimus, Elrav Valley, Kiwanis, Lyons, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, 4-H, and just private people come out. It's a fun thing to do. It's kind of awesome to do it. I would encourage you guys to come out on November 11th and see how it's done. That's Veterans Day. In reference to the trailer, I know Merritt's gone down and measured the trailer and seen it and all that sort of thing. It is an open trailer, and it's easy to take the flags in and out of that trailer because we lift them out from the back when we go down the street. And when we put them back in, we take them in from the side, and that's kind of hard to do on an enclosed trailer. So we would prefer an open trailer, but if we have to go enclosed, we'll have to do that. But we would prefer an inside storage somewhere. And I think if we maybe put it out to the whole city, maybe we can find something somewhere. One person pointed out to me, we could rent a lot of storage space for $6,000 that we'd have to put into a trailer. As far as money goes, we have spent probably $10,000 on this project, Rotary Club has, in buying the flags. The cost of those flags is about $50 because of their quality, with the poles and hardware and everything else. The drilling the holes, a lot of volunteer work, SHN loans, drills and that sort of thing. There's a lot of people worked on this project. So, and it's not only just the flags on Main Street. We've used them in the rodeo parade a couple of times. We put them up at the rodeo grounds. We've done a couple of services at Memorial, at the Veterans Hall for people. The most recent one, seeing how this is spreading, the National Forest Service called Fortuna to see if we'd put flags out for Dan Dill's process through Fortuna. So, so Fortuna's stepping up on this thing. Anyway, so I just want to say, the city is involved in this. It's not just a Rotary project. So we'd appreciate your help in, in the storage area. That's not something that we can do as a club, so appreciate your help on it. Any questions?
So you'd rather keep your open trailer and find a place to store it?
It's so much easier to load and unload in an open trailer. Yes, we would. But the only thing is that we have to find a place to store it.
How big of a storage area do you need?
That trailer is, you measured, it was, it's about, tongue-in-all, it's about 14 feet long, and it's probably eight, a little over eight feet wide.
How tall?
How tall?
Would it fit in a standard garage, or does it have to be?
Oh, no, it's, it's only short.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
So we'd be happy to work with Rick and the other community volunteers to try to find a spot, to try to identify the most cost-effective solution. And, you know, I just wanted to get some input from council before spending some effort, you know, and get a sense if this is something that council, you know, ultimately would want to put some fund towards, funds towards to, to solve the problem of the long-term storage. And so, you know, I think a ballpark is up to 6,000. I think, I know we could make something work for that, but, you know, maybe there's other community groups, or maybe there's somebody who has a storage space. I just wanted to put it out there and get direction from council on, you know, what your thoughts are.
My first thought is to put it out there, get it out on social media, get it out there in every service club, group, and see if somebody's got an empty space sitting somewhere that they would be willing to loan us. I know that when Scotia Band needed a place to store all their music stuff, I had a spot upstairs at my office, and that's where all their stuff is right now. So you never know who's got something that is maybe available, or they would make available because they just have stuff in it that's collected and they don't really need it. So let's get it out there for a month or two and see what happens. Go ahead.
You also have the option to be able to do GoFundMe, which exposes that to just about everybody in the United States for donating if they feel it's an appropriate patriotic project. There are inexpensive storage shipping containers that could probably be able to be purchased. There is not a lot of room behind parks and rec, the approach to go up into the park. But to me, that would be a beautiful spot to be able to actually back in and pull out a, the trailer that you have, but it would have to have the dimensions. And you'd have to find somebody who is not incapable of backing up a trailer to destroy the trailer every time, in and out. I don't have a problem with a, a shipping container, and they don't cost a lot, you know, a couple thousand dollars, way less than the $6,000 that's been estimated, so. But yeah, the mayor's suggestion is to put a little of exposure out to the public. If I were to say something derogatory, I know Thaddeus Greenson for the North Coast Journal would print it immediately, so Thaddeus, if you're watching, print it.
So if that escrow closes, Rick, I might have a temporary spot till we try to figure something else out, so let me know.
And I'll just say, we're not going to, you know, put the flags out in the rain, and we'll make sure that we find a spot, even if we have to work and put them in, you know, our Public Works building. They'll be in the way, but we'll deal with it, and we'll make sure that they're taken care of, so.
Before you do that, let me know, because I might have just a temporary space.
Okay.
Get us through for a little bit.
Is the trailer yours? Is it the club's?
The Rotary Club's.
Okay. And the expectation is that, that that's there for the flags forever? You just need a place to park it? Okay.
You still have the, the covers that you made to put over the back to keep the, the dust out and the birds and the feathers and...
I know. I mean, it's not going to hold up to rain, but no.
So it sounds like the council would like us to continue to work on solutions, and then if there is something monetary, to then bring that back for approval?
I think so. Is that what you guys think?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a feeling there's somebody somewhere in this town that will step up if we get the word out. That's what we do in Fortuna, so let's work on that.
Thank you.
Well, the VFW is always looking for different projects, too, so they might be somebody to approach as well, to partner with.
All right. Thanks for being here, Rick. Thanks for putting the flags out. Another date that they have done the past few years, we've asked for is the 3rd of July. So they actually go out there two days in a row. They do the 3rd of July for our big celebration, and then they do the 4th of July. So that's, that's asking a lot, and they do it every single time.
And don't forget the November 11th implications for all of you.
I'm out of town. Ask me again on another day. All right. Thanks, you guys. Our next item is consider approving Fortuna Senior Center Bingo Permit application. And I apologize that we kind of have a glitch in this one, and Merritt's going to explain that a little bit more.
Yeah, and so essentially with the staff report... Yeah, and so essentially, what the staff report completed by Chief Doverstein puts together is it describes that the Fortuna Senior Center would like to do, is requesting to operate a charitable bingo game. And Chapter 5.16 of the Municipal Code and state law allow for the city to authorize charitable bingo games and include any additional, any conditions the council deems reasonable and necessary to ensure compliance with the Municipal Code. But one of the things, this, under Chapter 5.16, is that it is a public hearing for the application. And so the application was in empty form that was submitted in the staff report, so I apologize to the seniors for not making sure that they had the completed application. But without a completed application, without the specific information for the bingo game, it's not really, there's not enough information there for the public to react to and to be able to consider a real public hearing to be able to have a meaningful public comment because there's no specifics of the particular charitable game that they're talking about, who the owners are, a lot of the different information that is included in the blank stat, you know, the draft stat, the draft application, or the unfilled-out application that's with the staff report. So I think that this needs to be continued until the next meeting. I know there's a number of seniors here who are here to support this item and wanted to see this get approved tonight, and I apologize to them for not having this straight beforehand, but we will do our best to get this done at the next meeting. And I think if the council didn't want to take any more public comment, I know there's a number of people who spoke because they weren't going to be here, but it would probably be good to open that up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Long, and council members, and Merritt. I just want to tell the public that this is the first time that they have done bingo, and so the instructions were not quite clear, and the papers were brought in, and they sent me home with them because they didn't need them. And we will, we'll just, we're seniors, we're very forgiving, and we will go with the flow and hopefully next, will we get this next month?
Hopefully the 21st.
Or next, the next meeting.
Yeah, October 21st.
We, we're okay. We'll be fine. So come and play bingo. But I do want to say a few things about the bingo. You know, we are a nonprofit organization, and we go with membership, we can't say dues anymore, membership donations, and if we get a grant or donations, other donations. So somewhere along the line that does not pay our bills. And I sincerely was, I just hate to keep asking people to buy another raffle ticket, and I don't like going downtown and just going in. The last time I went to Ace, I was the third person in line looking for a raffle prize. And I thought this would be a good idea for everybody to donate to the seniors if they came and played. And I looked back through the minutes, and I started asking to do this in 2011, and they finally left me do it. And it really has been successful because we've just not had everybody, we've just had members and friends. And it's brought people from Riedel, and people from Ferndale, and people from Eureka come down, the Eureka Moose helped us get started. And so it's a good thing for the seniors and the camaraderie and the fellowship. And a lot of, you know, folks don't have anything to do on Sunday night, and so they enjoy that. And it does help our organization. So we would appreciate it if you gave it a good consideration. And Dean, it's only $19. He thought that was a lot of money, but you can go to the casino and can't get in the door for 50, so it's affordable for seniors. So thank you very much, and we'll still vote next time, so thanks.
And we do have a meeting set up for 2:00 to go over that, and we'll make sure that we have everything there to have in the public hearing at the next meeting.
And we do apologize, we have never accepted a bingo application either, so apparently we didn't know what we were doing either, so we're sorry. Anyone else want to say anything before we close public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we need a motion to continue it to a future meeting, or do you want a specific date?
I think we should continue for a specific date. And then, I would, one other just comment is that we didn't even have an application form, so our city clerk came up with an application form, we had to have it reviewed. So we were working on it, and anyway, it is a new process for us, too, so thank you for your patience.
I'll make a motion to continue this project to, it's October 21st?
Yes.
October 21st meeting?
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Right, charming ladies.
All right, our next item is to consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate a construction contract for foundations for the solar light assemblies for the 12th Street Solar Lighting Project and approve a supplemental budget request not to exceed $310,000, Resolution 2019-28. Staff report, please.
So our deputy director of public works was planned to present this, but he went homesick with an injured back today, so I'll be presenting that for him. So if you have any questions, I generally have a pretty good understanding of what's happening with this project, anyway. So staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to request quotes and negotiate a construction contract to drill foundation holes in the new solar streetlight assemblies previously purchased by the city for the 12th Street Solar Light Project by adopting Resolution 2019-28. PG&E is currently in construction on its rural 28 project to underground the overhead utilities on 12th Street between Main Street and Highway 101. The placement of the new streetlights is the city's responsibility and not including the, not included in PG&E's project. And if you recall, at a previous council meeting, we looked at the different costs. Essentially, we'd have to share a proportional cost of PG&E's entire project, and it would have been significantly more to install additional conduit and run all of those to the streetlights, and the cost would have been more than the streetlights, the cost of this, much more than the solar streetlights. There's 28 new lights total. The city previously approved the purchase of the solar lights to avoid much higher costs for the placement of conduit and placement of the standard streetlights. PG&E originally anticipated completing their underground, undergrounding project and disconnecting power to the existing lights in February. That date is now moved up to the end of November, leaving the city little time to bid a project and have the streetlights installed in time. Therefore, staff would like to purchase the required materials for the foundations and negotiate a contract with a contractor for the installation of the poles instead of formal bidding, which would take longer and likely result in, not result in lower costs. And it would also make it questionable whether or not we would have time to get the streetlights in before they go dark. The primary work by a contractor would be drilling 30-inch holes and the installation of the light pole assemblies. City staff would place the reinforcement, anchor bolts, and conduit, and pour the concrete. Section 2.50, 0.70D of the Fortuna Municipal Code states the council may elect to dispense with formal competitive bidding for the construction, for a construction contract, and may instead authorize the city manager to negotiate directly with the contractor if the council finds it is in the public interest. And that's also restated in the attached resolution. The anticipated costs are also $30,000 higher than the current budget amount. Therefore, staff is also requesting additional $30,000 from Fund 275, which are RSTP funds. The anticipated balance for this fund without this expenditure is approximately $420,000. And therefore, there are adequate funds in that, adequate money in that fund for this use. RSTP funds are gas tax-derived funds, and streetlights are ineligible expenditure of these funds. $275,000 is previously approved, and the total budget for this project will be $310,000 now if approved. A copy of the supplemental budget request and the resolution are attached to the staff report. Staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to negotiate the construction contract for foundations for the solar light assemblies and the 12th Street Solar Light Project and approve a supplemental budget request not to exceed $310,000. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So according to this, they're actually moving, what, three, three months ahead of schedule?
Yes.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Yeah.
Does the construction, the bases, does that include the conduit and all, everything so that we still end up with the battery boxes in ground and...
Yeah, and that was one of the changes. I know that when the council saw this last, they wanted to, you know, consider the aesthetics and how we can improve how they look. And so one of the things we did is we changed the pole. We had to come back to council and ask for some of those additional funds to get the nicer poles that looked more similar to the poles downtown. And then the other thing that staff did is instead of having a large box mounted on the pole, is putting the box underground, and that also makes it more accessible for maintenance if we have to replace them. And they'll have a bolt-down secure lid, and we won't have to climb poles or use a boom truck if we have to get up to replace the batteries. So, you know, I think it's an improvement. It costs more money. You know, it is acceptable use for fund, for those funds from 275, and we do not plan on coming back to council again. We've had a couple of cost increase on this project, but we're still below what it would have cost to pay our proportional share for installing underground conduits, so.
Soon you're going to have a reputation like Bill.
Well, the good thing is this does not impact the general fund.
And it does not impact the general fund.
Yeah, the finance officers work miracles.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. If we don't have any more questions, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate a construction contract for the foundations of the solar light assemblies for the 12th Street Solar Light Project and approve a supplemental budget request not to exceed $310,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item is to consider approval of a residential onsite private sewer system on Hilltop Drive, APNs 202, 281, 021, and 037, Resolution 2019-29. Staff report?
Liz Shore will be providing the staff report for this item.
Thank you, Merritt. Council members. So the applicant is requesting approval of an onsite sewer system to serve the development of a single-family residence. It's actually a vacant parcel now, but they have plans to develop it, and they had submitted their onsite plans to the county health department, who contacted us as a referral. So that's how we became aware of this, this request. And then the Fortuna Municipal Code, Section 13.20.070, does require properties within 1,000 feet of an existing sewer main to connect to the main. Then it does, the code does have a section whereupon written request by the applicant that the council may approve an exception to that requirement and allow the onsite systems. So the applicant did submit that request, that's in your packet, there are letters in the packet. So just to briefly, their property is located on Hilltop Drive on the east end, the older neighborhood that's just past the Ridgeview Court and the new section of Hilltop. And that's in a neighborhood of older homes that are on, they're all on, they all have private sewer systems, septic systems, because the main doesn't extend past Hilltop, the new section of Hilltop. So, so their request, as they state in their letter, they're just, or their reason is that it's a financial burden to an individual homeowner. They are located approximately 300 feet from the end of the main, so that's the length that they would need to extend the sewer main, and they're indicating that that's not, you know, financially feasible for them. So, so ultimately, I think it's been discussed over the years that that neighborhood would benefit from extension of a main. They all, they're all smaller lots, you know, around 6,000 square feet, and under today's standards, that's not normally approved by the county health department. Just the area, the minimum area and the setbacks aren't sufficient to, you know, to meet today's health standards. So again, we did receive the referral from the county. In talking with the county about the suitability of the area, they, you know, they don't consider it suitable, and they are in support of the city's extending the main. Of course, that's a project that would need to be, you know, approved in the future by the county, by the city, like on a capital improvement program. But we do recommend that that ultimately be done. And because this is an individual request, and because of the financial burden, we do, staff does recommend approval of the request as an interim item for, you know, until the city does develop a plan. And then, you know, at that time, the cost would, you know, be identified and distributed amongst the property owners. There is a condition in the approving resolution that the property owner, this property owner agreed to connect to the public main when it's extended. And that would probably be under a, you know, an area-wide plan, so, you know, the main designed, the cost identified, and then the property owners notified about the cost distribution, if that's what the council approves at that, at that time. So the packet does include the letter of request. If you have any questions about any other attachments, there's the assessor parcel map, it does show the parcels. It's actually one parcel, it shows up as two parcels. The owner did buy both parcels because that's the area that was needed for the sewer. I assume that's why, and they merged the parcels. So it's actually one parcel now. And then the code section, and then the resolution. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
If I could just add on a little bit, Liz. I mean, what we were really trying to do is these people bought this lot, they didn't anticipate having to put in a whole new sewer line extension, and we didn't want to create a situation which delayed them. But if they're willing to acknowledge and accept that they may have to join in and pay their proportional share, we really wanted to find a way for them to move forward now without them having to put in the entire project. So I think this really meets the city needs in that ultimately we can put it in, they will agree to connect and pay their proportional share, but it doesn't put the burden on them to develop that project and be the trigger and be the catalyst for putting sewer on that whole street. So we still have the ability to do that with the Municipal Code. You know, if that project moved forward quickly, the only real cost to the property owner would be that they're paying for a septic system, and then they would ultimately end up abandoning it. So that's their choice, but at least we were able to identify a pathway for them to move forward and not be delayed with the construction of their home. And that was our goal, is to really try to meet their need and provide for the protection of the city in the long term by having them agree to hook up to the sewer when it's necessary.
Since there's no plan now, and we know how quickly the city can move, I wouldn't be too worried if I were them.
We'll see.
Does this whole neighborhood have city water?
Yes, there is city water there, but there's, there's, there's not septic. I mean, excuse me, there's not sewer on that street, but there's, on the Hilltop subdivision, which is, you know, nearby, it's close, it's not far away. So typically, we would require it, but because there's already existing homes with septic, then, you know, we figured one more isn't going to be an issue. But, you know, in occurrence, you know, if we started to see failed septic systems, you know, that might be something that triggers the city moving and putting together a project more quickly.
Looks like they've basically tripled the size of their lot by purchasing that other one. The opportunity to isolate it even further from their neighbors, so it would feel, it looks like they've taken their own mitigation steps.
Yeah, I know over the years that those parcels have been offered for sale, and we've had requests for how to develop them separately. And it's, you know, it's been kind of gone back to the health department that individually the parcels aren't large enough, so anyone who bought them would need to, we're informed that they would need to buy both of them in order to get that approval.
Any more questions before we open it up?
Yep, I got one.
I've been on and off the council since 2002. Nowhere during the entire duration has the discussion ever been of actually requiring, because of the health department, to have owners of the parcels that have septic tanks have the requirement to have septic systems installed. Hook up. Now, we didn't have the construction that occurred to the west, so you could always use that as an excuse because it was just not going to be cost-effective. Now you have a trigger point, a catalyst, that actually should be expediting the city's need to move forward and actually have a public hearing and require every single member who owns and has a septic tank system on top of Hilltop to comply. In the 1980s, all of Campden Heights was required to go and have their septic tank systems completely closed off, filled up, capped off, and be hooked up to sewer. So I don't know what the trigger point was back then, but we, as a city, have been really irresponsible. That's an old neighborhood, probably from the late 50s, early 60s, because I know I tried to buy a home up there in 1972. We have, we have not complied. So you currently have in Fortuna Municipal Code the requirement. If we keep on making exceptions, we're sort of hypocrites. Why put something down in a requirement in our code and we don't fulfill it? So... So, whoever owned that parcel and sold it to the applicant knew full well that they were trapped and they could not do anything with it. Whether there was full devotion, divulging of, of information when it was purchased, that that was one of the first and foremost priorities to either make an exception or be compliant. Right now, we have the opportunity to be able to start moving forward with a sewer system for six houses. He's, he's five, he's, I think he's the sixth parcel that would actually have a sewer heading, heading westward. If the individuals who have the septic tank systems right now on the north side of Hilltop were to contractually work together to come up with a cost-sharing basis, that this would not be a financial hardship. If you're going to have to put in a leach field, a, a septic tank, and have it installed by a contractor, you're probably going to put in $2,000, $3,000. I, I would think it would be far less or equivalent to the same thing if you shared the costs of the very beginning footprint of a sewer system. So, Fortuna Municipal Code requires this. He's already saved, you would save 70% of the cost. Now, if he was at the other end of the street, as far as, as Hilltop goes, you're looking at, looking at an additional 70% cost factor. But he's so close. To me, it's not correct for us as a city to make a waiver, because all we're doing is kicking the can down the street, being irresponsible for not complying with, with the health department's mandates, and also, at the same time, not fulfilling our obligation as elected officials to follow the Fortuna Municipal Code. So, I would, I would want to see, actually worked out, what the cost would be to him personally be responsible for doing this, the sewer system from his lot, and then to try to come up with, touch bases with the individuals that have the homes adjacent to him going further west, and see whether they're willing to, to join onboard. Because at some point in time, we have to do this. But unfortunately, for two decades, or three decades, we, we have failed to do it. Now, we have, right for, right in forefront, we have the opportunity to be able to take the right step, so.
So, I think that you missed what Mayor was trying to say. To do all of that, you have to have engineering, you have to have plans, you have to have a project. And that will take a year, months and months for the city to do all of that. And someone has to pay for all of that in the meantime. You have to come up with pricing for all of these other people. And so, they would not be able to build their house for however long that would take, probably two years.
You're, you're still, you're still a resident on Ronald, so it's not like the world's coming to an end that you need to build a home. Now, whether this home is going to be for speculation, I don't know. He's not, the gentleman's not homeless, he lives up the street from me. So, to consider this, a need to do it immediately, we got to do it as fast as possible, no, it's unacceptable. Two different places in Fortuna, Newburgh, as well as Roneville Road, have actually had required sewer systems installed. And then, for a 10-year period, the residents had the privilege to be able to hook up to that and disproportionately pay back the initial person who did it. Same thing for Newburgh, for their water system. It was proportionally payback by the residents that wanted to hook up. After 10 years, there was no requirement to pay back the original contractor developer that did that. It's not like we've never done this before. And like I said, it's not like the gentleman is homeless, he lives up the street from me. Now, whether his two boys are running him out of the house, he's got to find his own place to live, I don't know. But right now is the time, we should be doing something proactive and, and being responsible, rather than going, if we approve this, we have, we have, we have allowed it for Hilltop to go forever. I will be long dead before anybody wants to take on this political hot potato. And there's 25 people up there. They don't want it unless they're approached in some appropriate manner. And this is like, like red flag, we need to, we need to start making some gestures and contacts immediately. Anyway, thanks, Madam Mayor.
I might just add that, you know, staff has no problem undertaking this. And I, you know, I think generally, the city council is, you know, wanted to see sewer extensions. I think ultimately, the catalyst will be if, you know, you see a failing septic system, you know, the county has enforcement authority over septic systems. So, if something like that happens, the county would notify us and, and let the city know. And we'd have to undertake a project, because those lots are small enough, they don't have room for a reserve field. So, it's unlikely that some of those existing homes would be able to come up with another solution. So, I think at some point, ultimately, you know, this will have to happen. But we were trying to be sensitive to the needs of the, you know, the landowner who wants to build their home now. And again, they, they would take on some additional cost, because they put in a leach field that, you know, a septic system that ultimately would have to be replaced by a, a connection to the city sewer. So, we wanted to provide them a path forward, and, and it would be a financial hardship, probably mostly due to the time that it would take for them to go through a project and develop the plan. So, you know, staff's not unwilling to pursue that. And so, I think that the item's clear. If you have any more questions, you know, before you go to the public, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Come up to the podium so we can hear you.
Go to the microphone, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your consideration, Dean. Yes, you do live down the block from me, and I am not homeless. We did purchase the property. I don't really know what to say. I heard that it was 2.0, no, 1.2 mil, these are just, I'm just throwing this off the top of my head. It was 1.2 million, the 25 homeowners declined that, so that's approximately 50,000 each. And just a rough estimate would be, I could dig my own line, 6-inch line, right to the 300 feet for about $40,000, obviously. But that is kind of cost prohibitive, and doesn't really make sense to just put one pipe in for one house. Obviously, they all need to be hooked up to the city at some point. But, with that said, I just, I just want to thank you guys for your consideration, yeah. And we did combine the property. The, the level top is probably where the house would have to be, because down below isn't really feasible. So, obviously, that would be a leach field. And of course, if there was a city sewer system in the future, it would just be $5,000, you would dig it out, hook right up to it, that would be great. But, obviously, that's not happening today, so. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. What do we want to do?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-29 and read by title only.
Second. We have a motion in a second, Buffy?
Resolution 2019-29, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, approving the installation of a residential onsite private sewer system on Hilltop Drive. Councilmember Glazer?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right, our next item is to direct the city manager to establish a fund for nuisance abatement expenses and approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $15,000 for nuisance abatement activities within the city. Staff report, please.
So, I won't repeat the recommendations, since you just read it probably better than I could. But, Section 8.16.180 of the Municipal Code allows the city council to create a revolving fund from which to pay the costs of nuisance abatement by the city. Any expenses incurred by the city would be charged to this fund, and any recovered would be placed into that fund. I guess, let me back up. You know, one of the reasons for doing this is, you know, Measure E provided funds for a new part-time code compliance officer. And our code compliance officer has been quite active. And so, we have a number of open cases right now, a few, you know, a couple of which could go and require abatement by the city. Right now, in the city's budget, we don't have any funding set aside for those abatement activities. So, that's really what's driving this item, is to take up some money, put it into a revolving fund to track for nuisance abatement, and to be able to spend the money out of that fund. And then, as that money is recovered in the future, to be able to put it back into that fund, so we, we can track the costs. And so, I think it's really important, right now, you know, while we have that position funded, we really want to show the public results. You know, we don't want to go all the way up to abatement hearings and then not abate nuisances that people have been complaining about for years. So, we've already started to take some action on this. And this would just allow us to set up a fund to, to track those expenses. Some cases, it may take a long time, we may have to foreclose on a piece of property if somebody's, you know, you know, if we do the abatement, we bill them and they don't pay it. And so, again, it could take a year, maybe even two years, to get all the way through that, that process and collect. You know, we might end up having bad debt. So, ultimately, it could end up costing the city money to the general fund if, for some reason, we can't collect. Say that, you know, there's already liens on a property and we're not the first, and it goes for less than, you know, the lien amount. So, I think there's a couple parts. One, are we serious about doing this nuisance abatement and enforcing the city's municipal code? And the second is, you know, understanding that it could cost us a little money. I do, you know, theoretically, you know, it'd be cost neutral, but, you know, you have to assume that some of that debt ultimately will be bad debt. So, what we're doing with this item is we're requesting the council to direct the city manager to establish a fund for expenses related to nuisance abatement and approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of 15,000 for nuisance abatement activities. And there's a copy of the supplemental budget request attached in the staff report in the council package, if you have questions. And essentially, that just shows money being transferred from the general fund to a yet unnamed fund or unnumbered fund for, for nuisance abatement. I would say, in just holding some of the city managers' hearings for nuisance abatement, there's a lot of people who've been very patient for a long time in, in having to deal with nuisances in their neighborhood. So, this is one that I feel very strongly about, and, you know, would highly recommend that the council, you know, put these funds there and allow us to start cleaning up some of these messes within the city that, that people have had to deal with near their homes.
So, even if there was a property that had other liens on it, can't you attach it to their property taxes, and in the end, we wouldn't lose money?
It might be a good question. So, I know, for example, there's one we're looking at right now, there's one existing lien from the county, there's one that we could attach. You know, so if there's existing liens from other governmental agencies, you know, for unpaid property taxes, I'm not sure who would have senior rights, whether it would be the county for property taxes, or whether it would be the city for nuisance abatement that could attach to the property taxes. I'm guessing the county property taxes would come first. And so, one of them we're looking at, you know, could end up in that situation. But I think the value of the property is significantly more than the county property tax lien and what the city would put into abatement. So, even though that one, we might be second in line, and again, I don't, I would have to ask our attorney that. You know, I still think there's enough value there that, that the city could recover their funding.
We switched, Aaron can verify, I may be wrong, but I think we switched from a property lien to a tax lien when we, on weed abatements about five years ago or so.
Yeah, and our municipal code calls it a lien assessment that is attached to property taxes. So, I think, you know, that assessment, you know, it's pretty clear that it goes to property taxes, and I did review that with our attorney. And so, you know, whatever we bill them that they don't pay would be included in their property tax amount. And that's actually stated specifically in the city's municipal code.
I mean, that, we could do the same thing with this nuisance abatement, it's just going to be probably a much larger amount.
Well, and that, and that would be our plan. And, you know, if you look at the cost of one nuisance abatement, say, for example, you had to tow a couple of RVs, that may cost you 500 bucks to tow the RV. And, you know, if we had to store it, it could be 100 bucks a day, unless we find a spot on city property, which we've done with one already. You know, and then if you look at the cleanup, it could be $10,000 for, for one parcel. You know, there's, there's some places with some significant accumulation of garbage and debris, you know. So, we are, fortunately, we are seeing some of the worst ones. Property owners and their families are taking responsibility. So, you know, right now, out of three pretty serious ones, we have one or two that we think we'll have to do, and the other ones, people are stepping up. So, again, you know, I can come back and report periodically to council and, you know, and let, let you guys know what that fund has in it. But, you know, again, we're starting in a much more active stance on nuisance abatement at this point that we have in the past. So, it's something that I'll keep you appraised of as we go through these.
Mayor, do you think 15,000 is enough? We've got some, a lot of.
We, you know, we'll, we'll see. I, you know, I think we can start with that. You know, I, I think we have one pretty significant one right now that we could probably get done for five to 10. You know, if the council wanted to put $30,000 in there, you know, I might not be back as soon. It kind of depends, if you want to start small and you want me to come back if we start spending a lot of money, or if you want to put more in there and not really see me back and we'll take care of more. It's kind of a, you know, however you guys want to do it. I don't mind coming back. I think, even if we do come back, it would be a good opportunity to show the council and the public what we're spending money on, and show some pictures and some before and after. You know, and I do want to share some of these successes as we move forward with the press, because I think it's important for the public to see their Measure E dollars being spent on, you know, this, which really does impact quality life for, for neighborhoods.
Here, for, I'm going to go back to 20 years. 2002, there were problem locations in Fortuna that were just nightmares. And did we, as a city, put on boxing gloves and carry a big bat and thump them? No, we played sort of reluctant to, to offend them, other than sending them a letter. That failed horribly with the new nuisance abatement officer and his approach, which is still legal. It's not, not breaking any laws, but following through in a different pattern, one-on-one, rather than a two-dimensional piece of paper. We currently, as a city, have accomplished miracles, which is just, I have to say that again. We've accomplished miracles in eradicating squalor and, and a representation of what doesn't mean Fortuna. It's just the opposite. And so, the success rate, in my mind, has been 1,000%. And I'd like to be able to see that perpetuated. So, if we place liens on their property tax, it has to be done before the county prints it. So, we technically will be waiting a 12-month period. And I'll just say 12 months to wait. In the meantime, depending upon what new locations that we find, which I would hope, by the nature of the beasts, that we would have eliminated the high problem and worked our way down to low problem zones, so the cost wouldn't be as much. So, we're cleaning from the problematic down to the minors, so the cost should be less. But your suggestion is to approach us. You know, we're pretty open-minded to keeping something that's successful going, rather than saying, no, we're not going to pay you any more money. Because the comment by the abatement officer is that we've been using the lawyers quite a bit, and that's not cheap, so. But yeah, for him, I've given him compliments to his face, to his person. And I'll say it again, that you are really doing wonders for our city and making us shine as a problem solver.
Any other comments?
No, I just would like if this, you know, if this does run low for you to come back, because I don't want to stop doing projects because we've run out of money.
And I think, you know, this will cover, you know, as Councilmember Glazer pointed out, we took on probably the two or three biggest cases that we've had ongoing complaints in the city. So, those will be more costly. Not to say there's not out there, but we're taking on some of the bigger, more expensive ones right now.
Which is good. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
We're going to hold off?
No, I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $15,000 for nuisance abatement.
Second the motion.
Could you just add to establish a revolving fund, if I didn't?
And to establish a revolving fund for nuisance abatement.
One other, I, I didn't have a chance to add this, I apologize. Can we have some kind of a quarterly update to give us an idea of what, what projects? You don't have to be specifically to name it, but what the costs are and what the projected timeline of recovery would be? Is that something that's feasible?
Yes.
But does your second still stand with his amendment, with his addition to the motion?
Yeah, and I'll second, I'll second the addition, addition to a revolving fund.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next item is to consider authorizing the city managers to submit a grant to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the replacement of the Jameson Creek culvert at Roneville Road, and designate the city manager as the authorized representative, Resolution 2019-30.
So, this was an opportunity to have my new deputy city engineer, our new deputy city ed. engineer, Freddie, tonight, but he had a sick family member, so he is not here either. So, I'll be providing the staff report for this one. I'll give both of them a hard time that Mr. presenting their staff reports tomorrow. But anyway- But anyway, the, the, the request or the recommendation is a little bit misleading because we did submit a grant application, but what's actually required is we've been informed that we're tentatively approved to receive the grant, but it's important that the Department of Fish and Wildlife has a resolution to demonstrate the council approval and also to designate an authorized representative. But we have been informed that they do want to fund the project and we're working on a grant agreement, a draft grant agreement with them right now. The grant will be for the replacement of the culvert at Jamison Creek at Ronarville Road and will include, include the replacement of existing culvert. That culvert is, is ultimately would have to be replaced by the city, but this is a great opportunity to use grant funds to replace the culvert in a way that will allow for fish passage in the future. It also brings down the city's cost burden significantly. The grant will provide 1.7 million in addition to the $998,000 grant that the city has already received from the Wildlife Conservation Board. Both of the, all of the funds for this grant, for the one through the Wildlife Conservation Board and the one being contemplated tonight are, are through Prop 68. So the combined project total will be 2.7 million and the required match for the city is $6,000. The project is already listed, included in the city's 2019, 2020 capital improvement program and a copy of the resolution requested for approval is attached. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Glad you clarified that in the beginning because I was reading this thinking that we already got this money, we already did this and I was confused. So, okay, now I get it. Any questions for Merritt? Anybody from the public? All right, we'll close public comment.
We'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-30. Read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Buffy?
Resolution 2019-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving the application for grant funds from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife 2019, Proposition 1 and 68 for the 2020 Wildlife Corridor and Fish Passage Project and designating the city manager as the authorized representative.
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our last item is to consider approving professional services contract amendment with GHD for environmental analysis in the amount of $57,060 for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Waste Water Compliance Project.
So I originally wanted to bring this with the other amendment we did for GHD earlier in September, if you may have noticed, but they got me the scope of work a couple of days in advance, so I just hadn't had time to review it and contemplate it. And so that's why we ended up having two amendments. So I just wanted to clarify, this is the second one that we've seen a little bit of time. The city's been working with GHD on a wastewater, on wastewater permit compliance since 2012, specifically on the city's preliminary engineering report and NPDs compliance. In January of 2017, the city executed a grant agreement with the State Department of Water Resources for, excuse me, State Water Resources Control Board for a planning grant in the amount of $500,000. This provided funding for several of the tasks the city needed to do to complete their wastewater pre-feasibility analysis and stay in compliance with the terms in its NPDs permit. If you look at table one of your staff report, there's a number of items that were included in the grant, included disposal site evaluations, surface water disposal evaluations, sanitary sewer evaluation, a project engineering report update, wastewater treatment and disposal system preliminary design, California Environmental Quality Act, mitigated NAGDEC abbreviated SEQA MND and the Report of Waste Discharge. One of the things that we did, that's not included in your table, is there are a few items, additional permit applications, lands and right-of-way acquisition and negotiations. And what we did is we rolled those budgets into the previous items. So this NPDs, excuse me, the SEQA MND, that's the last item that we're, we're required to do as a part of our grant agreement to fulfill the terms of our grant. And the deadline for this is February. So this is the last item that we'll be doing as an amendment for the work that GHD is doing on their wastewater project. And after this, we'll be moving to the next phase, which will be actually the, the, the design of the project. So all, let's see, all work on this project is be required to be completed no later than March of next year. That's the, the drop dead date for this funding source. This amendment will allow for all the work completed on their grant to be completed and reimbursed within allowable timeframe. GHD's proposed scope of work and fee is attached to the staff report and includes, includes a total fee not to exceed 57,000. 38,800 of this will be reimbursed from the State Water Resources Control Board grant while the remaining funding is budgeted as a part of the C, Capital Improvement Project 0171 NPDs compliance, which there's a million dollars in that budget for this year, but the city's not going to spend much of that money. So it's, you know, if we got further than we thought we would, we may, but it's unlikely that we'll spend all of the budget that we have in there for NPDs compliance this year. Therefore, staff is requesting that the council approve the professional contract amendment with GHD for environmental analysis in the amount of $57,060 for the NPDs wastewater compliance project. There's a draft amendment included with the staff report as well, or a change order form.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question about table one and then the proposed amendments.
Sure.
Seems like the $500,000 included as SEQA MND and now subtasks number 2.2 and 2.3 are more expensive than the original expense and it's double the cost in essence. Why didn't it get done in the original? What did we pay for, for the first?
So it was an estimate when we applied for the grant and when we get down to the actual costs, they ended up being higher than we anticipated in the grant. And that's why we, you know, and I, I apologize for not having the revised table, but if you look at table one, it says additional permit applications and lands and right-of-way acquisition negotiations. So we took those budget and rolled it into some of the other items. I guess I don't have a, a good explanation other than, you know, when we went through and got the detailed proposal and scope of work and fee, it ended up being higher than we anticipated in the grant. You know, I think, I guess the way I look at this is we, you know, we have a half a million dollars towards something we would have had to do anyway. So we're slightly above this, so we're still doing well to have received that much grant funding, but we missed our target because we underestimated the cost. I don't really have a better way to explain it than.
And I misspoke. It's 38.8 over here, not the 27 that it's supposed to be future.
38,800 and the actual cost is 58. And if you look at one of the big ones, the biological resource report, that's a pretty big one. So that's probably where we missed it. That's about 17,000. The cultural resource investigation, if you, I'm looking at, you know, the table included in the staff report under financial impact, but you can see what the costs are. You know, the, the biggest ticket item in this change order is the actual drafting of the, the SEQA document with the mitigated NAGDEC and then the cultural resource investigation and biological resource report.
So I guess we're just trusting you that you're holding your, our vendor accountable and it just was an overrun or an oversight from its original expense?
Yeah, I mean, we, we put in a number that we thought was adequate. It's a complicated project and what this project includes is actually directional boring under the Eel River, development of alternative location to discharge of the city's treated wastewater. You know, we, right now we do have a willing landowner over across the Eel River, but it's a pretty significant project. And I think, you know, it's easy to underestimate what it would take to analyze something when you're looking at it two, from two years ago. When you start getting a better picture of what it looks like on the ground, it can be a pretty complicated project. So, you know, that, I, I, I reviewed the scope of work from the consultant. I met with them. They offered to be here tonight. I didn't think that we'd need any kind of a presentation, but I feel comfortable with the scope that they put in front of us and certainly spent a lot of time critiquing it. And this is actually lower than what they originally proposed, but, you know, after we went through it, we were able to, you know, find some ways to reduce the fee, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And just, it's also a not to exceed, so if there, I mean, it's, you know, as most of you know, working with consultants, a lot of times you don't come in under, but we have in the past, so we'll do what we can to keep control of this budget.
Three, four years ago, before we were trying to come up with alternate means of, complying with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, it was conjectured that it was going to cost the city $10 million to come up with a treatment plant to be able to discharge the water into Strong's Creek cleaner than what it started out as. So if we are attempting to come up with a financially conservative means that is successful and expenditure of a very much smaller amount is justified. So it seems that the approach by the city is to try to find the Leicester of the evils and come up with another source that doesn't require $10 million invested. Or am I talking about something that was not spoken about four years ago?
You know, I think the city's approach in the past is to really take as much time as they can and not act, you know, the project the city completed in the past was really just kind of a solids handling project and it wasn't a complete revamp of the city's wastewater facility. I mean, there was a number of additions that were made, but we still haven't ever dealt with the disposal and the prohibitions in the basin plan. We're now, if you recall from my last presentation, we're now being, we're on a time schedule order for figuring out the disposal alternative to what we're doing now. And we're told what we're doing now is unacceptable. We are pursuing that as well as an alternative pathway that would allow us to keep doing what we're doing, which may be more cost-effective. I don't know which one's going to be cheaper yet, but at this point, our goal is to choose a project that will require the least impact to rates. And we will continue to do that. And that's why we're still pursuing two options because when you're talking about a 10 to 20 million dollar project, you know, choosing wisely and making sure you've investigated, you know, all your potential solutions could have a big impact on, on rates. So, you know, we're doing our best and we're at the point where we're going to, you know, have some very clear costs on disposal and treatment upgrades required real soon.
My, my point is just a small missed calculation on a cost factor that is below $100,000. I mean, it sounds ironical for me to say a couple of extra zeros, but it's actually a human factor and an acceptable component of being responsible for making the best conjecture and estimate as possible. So I, I don't think any of us have a problem with that. It's just sometimes numbers will shock the public that, why are you spending that? Well, we have an explanation to justify it.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Make a motion to approve for a professional contract amendment with GHD for environmental analysis in the amount of $57,060 for the NTDES wastewater compliance project.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to city manager's report.
So I, first I'd like to review the upcoming meeting schedule. The next meeting will be on Monday, October 21st and that'll be a regular county, city council meeting. I just wanted to remind the council that I will not be at that meeting and I know a number of members of the council will be gone for the preceding weekend for the League of California Cities Meeting. So we will do our best to keep that a light agenda. I know one thing that will be on that agenda for sure is bingo for the Fortuna Senior Center. So we will make sure that that gets on there and is complete in advance. The next planning commission is on October 8th. The next Measure E meeting is on December 17th and the next Roner Community Recreation and Park District meeting is on November 6th. Couple of items to report due to some delays with financing for the purchaser of 2812. That's going a little bit longer than it should have. We originally had in our ESCO 20-day, excuse me, yeah, 20 days from when the city completed the rezone, which was on September 16th. It would have taken it around the first week of November, but I, I think that their lender has put more conditions on there that are delaying it. So we may have to execute an amendment just to allow them some more time to finish up some of the additional requirements the, the lender has put on them. We also kicked off the architectural feasibility study for the proposed police facility at 2600 Newburgh Road and we're in the due diligence period. I met with, we, members of the police department. We had all levels. We had, we didn't have the chief, but we had the lieutenant, we had a couple of sergeants, we had officers. And so I'm heavily involving the police in that process and then we had a very productive meeting and they're doing a great job at providing feedback and what they think that facility would need to have and also trying to find ways to scale that back from, you know, with the 16,000 or 18,000 square foot building that was conceived of in the original feasibility study that was, that was done in the past. So I think we, you know, we have a good working group and we're involving as many members of the police department as we can. Last week I had the opportunity, Aaron Dunn set up a meeting with Jim Woods, Mayor Long and Councilmember Stanfield came along. We showed him some of the projects that we're looking at and also shared some of the challenges with him and talked about ways that he could help. And we found some areas that he may be able to assist the city. So it was a positive meeting and that was the first time I had an opportunity to meet Mr. Wood. So I, I was pleased with his willingness to try to help the city. Staff is working on an application for the John Campbell Memorial Greenway. There's four million, up to $4 million in this, this particular program that we're looking at and it's focused at the development of greenways. And so the section that we're looking at and going to, it's a real short kind of concept application, so we just have to do figures and estimate and narrative. And the city's done a lot of work on the John Campbell Memorial Greenway. There's a master plan, there's, there's all kinds of detail. So we're taking pieces out of that, reconfiguring some of the drawings and packaging those. But we're going to focus on looking at the piece from the River Lodge over to Strong Street Drive, just because we think that's one of the critical sections and it'll score really well as if you can attach a community to a greenway is one of the, or a green belt area is, is one of the priorities for this program. And we think we'll be able to score pretty highly if we can find a way for people to walk or bike to the Eel River and have a complete facility to get there. And right-of-way challenges going from Strong's Creek the other way are, are a little more challenging. And so we want to have one where there's only a couple of property owners, the Town of Scotia and Edgeman and Caltrans. So we're hopeful that, you know, we're well positioned for this with the work the city's done in the past. And then also we worked with the Chamber of Commerce and provided a number of projects and some introductions for new employees and they'll be publishing, you know, a, a periodical occasionally with the North Coast Journal that gives updates on what's happening in Fortuna. So we highlighted some of our new staff and some of our successful projects and the benefits to the community. So you should see that coming out in the near future. I'm not sure how much of it they'll use. I think we had a couple of pages. I think we gave her about four pages worth of material, so we'll see what makes it in. That's all I have.
Is there a city match on that Greenway grant this time?
Not a required match.
Because we lost out on one before because we didn't have a city match, is that right?
We, yeah, we.
Something like that.
When we applied in the past, there's a couple of different applications that we put in and they were for the Alternative Transportation Grant Program. One of them, it came down, we scored the same, you know, we had the lowest score for a funded project, but we tied with, I think it was a, I can't remember if it was City of Truckee or it was somewhere in the Sierras. And, you know, if we would have scored a few more points, we would have been above them. They funded that project and we got kicked out and then they changed the program every year and the criteria changed. We submitted a similar grant application the next year and we didn't even come close. So the ATP program has gotten a lot more competitive and a lot of the money's going to bigger cities, but we've been very successful so far with the Prop 68 grant applications. And I think this, this, this program is funded through Prop 68. So our new executive assist, our new administrative assistant for community development has really been kind of helping to pull this together and she's very anxious to, but she said, it seems like this opportunity was written for us, you know, having a master plan and documented community meetings, you know, we have a chance to really score highly opposed to a community who may have not put so much into the planning effort. So we're still hopeful that, that planning effort will turn into some dollars.
Any other questions for Merritt? All right, seeing none, we will move on to future agenda items.
I want to go back to my same request. I'd like to have a resolution by Fortuna to state that Fortuna is a non-sanctuary city. And another request, since the 5G system with the towers is being promoted and pushed all across the United States, I'd like to have Fortuna being exempt of having any 5G towers installed. So we would be 5G exempt.
Anything else?
We accomplished the one, I wanted a Eel River update and we got it.
All right. The city council reports, Dean.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I, I did want to make some wonderful positive comments about the Hillside Creek project and what's being done and what we will proactively accomplish. You know, looking at Ronarville Road and looking westward, the amount of debris, particulate, brush, whatever has been scoured out is phenomenal. I haven't had a chance to walk through the, the project to actually see it in person, but if that doesn't solve the problem for water, getting where it's supposed to be, there's something wrong with the amount of rain that we're going to be getting. I, I'm not going to steal the thunder. I hope Sue says something about Laszlo Lesku for Wednesday. As for people that belong to a conservancy, and I don't know who you are, whether you see this beamed to the National Space Station, it comes back.
see this beamed to the National Space Station that comes back to the United States, there's a beautiful parcel of 26 acres right across from Redwood Memorial to the north, that would make a wonderful investment purchase by a conservancy group to have open space, and it would be also a wonderful place for maybe having another park. Bob Nat, where's the street sweeper?
Inside the shop.
Pardon?
It's inside the shop.
Has it ever been out?
It's already.
We touted about how great it was going to be coming up on a flatbed, and I never even knew it ended up here.
Yes, it is here, and we're going to start operating it on Wednesday morning.
All right, come up my street and honk. Okay, everybody will be excited about that. The public's perception of some of the things that I talk about may be a little extreme or maybe considered radical from their viewpoints, but my obligation is to represent this city the best I possibly can, to defend my city from any kind of intrusion of irregularities or wrong things, and I take pride in doing that, and I don't mind being attacked and written about, I have strong shoulders and a strong hide, and I look forward to be able to be representative as long as I'm on this earth. And with the final statement, I'd like to say God bless America, God bless our troops, wherever you are, may you be safe and return back to this wonderful country that we live in.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Well, I attended the last HCOG meeting, and one of the nice things was that we received an update on the Safety Corridor project and the cost overrun for the construction of that, and at this time, Caltrans has decided to absorb the cost overrun on their own, so it won't affect our local funding as of now, although I think this year and next year, our STIP allocation is zero, and then the following year is when we start getting STIP funds, so, they didn't really have anything to take right now. Also, RSTP funds were allocated, and then during that last couple of weekends, I've been kind of busy planting trees at the Gene Lucas Center, standing in for Mayor Long at the Oktoberfest, and last weekend, last Friday, building hay wagons for the apple harvest, so, I've kept my community service up.
Good, thank you for doing that for me. Tammy, no, Jeremy, sorry.
Beginning of the last quarter of 2019, so there's a lot of stuff coming up with FBID, the FBID board and staff has started to do a walking tour of businesses throughout town to send out a survey on how the FBID can better serve the business community, so if you haven't seen one of those walking tour groups yet, get on their list, or stop by and see Diana at the FBID office in Monday Club. They're also working on, working with the County Economic Development Department to get our vacancy list out to potential businesses at a county level. They're kicking off the holidays with a Shop Small Saturday campaign beginning on November 30th, and they will have kids-free movies again this year, they're going to attempt to do something a little different, or it's in the conversation that they will have one at the theater, and then potentially partner with the Park and Rec Commission and have another one with the blow-up movie screen in the pavilion, so, we'll be approaching city staff with that request. Says that Downtown Merchants and Strong's Creek Plaza are both looking for adding some new holiday decorations for the upcoming season. Redwood Village will be hosting the Lighted Christmas Parade, Lighted Parade with, excuse me, with help from the FBID office. They will also be working with the Eureka Lighted Parade for the first time in many years, thanks to our first district supervisor, Rex Bone. Fortuna bucks are going to be discontinued, so, hear first that Fortuna bucks can be redeemed now and until December 31st, 2019, at all local merchants, and if you have Fortuna bucks that you haven't spent after that date, from the 1st through June 30th, the FBID office will cash you out, so that they're not going to be worthless, and they're going to place this shop local campaign with something new launching in July of 2020. FBID's working on a grant for $20,000 for a new marketing and promotional campaign, stay tuned, as we should know more in December if we get it or not. We still have a vacancy on the seat that's available to be appointed by our mayor, so if you have some interest in FBID and all the new things going on there, please contact our clerk's office. I want to thank Merritt for the invitation to go on the tour with, of some of the projects and future needs of our area with Assemblyman Jim Wood, I appreciate him coming to our area and paying attention to our projects and offering his support where it's needed. We did have a last Movies at the Park for the 2019 summer season, they showed Ferdinand, it was well-attended, not as well as the Sandlot, seems like we had a hit in that one, but it was a neat project, all the feedback from citizens was that they really enjoyed the free movie night and the opportunity to do something with family on a Saturday. Today's chamber meeting, Estelle Fennell was our guest speaker, and she spoke about lots of projects in the county that could positively impact Fortuna, and there's more to come on that at a future date, she did also announce that she'll be announcing her campaign for reelection this Thursday at noon in front of the Vets Hall. Shout out to Seth McGrath and Bob Judevine and all the volunteers for Apple Harvest. Seth and Bob were in charge of the hay wagon rides, and I drove all day, hence the special sunburn I've got going on. And I thought that my favorite stop of the day downtown was Buzzin', but, and the crowds were big, so, congratulations to the volunteers for the apple harvest, and thanks to city staff for all the work with cleaning out trash bins and recycling, keeping things moving, but I was really impressed with the turnout at the fire department with the sheriff and the Fortuna PD, I think Chief was there all day with kids hitting the siren and talking into the mic and really engaging with our community. The Coast Guard brought a helicopter, and the Army had a rock wall there, so, pretty neat event there and throughout the city. Just a quick FYI for everybody, Fortuna High School's home camping is this week, there's going to be lots of nights of late practices for kids, so just be extra diligent when they're coming and going around the high school, I know my kids are involved, and they have cheer practice from 5 to 7, and powder puff practice, and then they have lip sync practice from 7:30 to 9:30 and 8 to 10, so it's a busy, busy week, so, and that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Tammy. Well, the advantage of being second to last is most everyone's already been reporting.
Usually I catch, usually I catch flack, you didn't say anything, Madam Mayor.
So, I have nothing left to report.
Oh, I attended the LAFCO meetings as the alternate since our last council meeting, and of course, REDEC, and of course, Apple Harvest, and the Movie in the Park, and I'm kind of sad that's over. My little grandkids were really liking that. As Dean alluded to, we are going to dedicate the soccer field at Rona, Newburgh Park to Lasco Lescue on Wednesday at 5:30, so I'm hoping that we'll have a big crowd for that. He definitely made a huge impact in Fortuna by bringing soccer in, and for many years, we couldn't compete with Arcata, we got creamed at every level, and that has turned around through the years, and Fortuna is right up there winning soccer titles and doing really well. And our soccer program at the youth level, they start at four years old, and all my grandkids are involved, and, well, not all of them now, I have two new ones, but the ones that are old enough are all involved in soccer and just really enjoy it, and so, a really good thing when you go down on Saturday and you just see all the families and you see all of the participation, and I just love anything where I see kids out playing outside and they're not glued to a video game or their iPad, so, for me, it's a win-win, so I'm hoping we get a big crowd, and the family is excited that the city is actually going to do this, so, please join us Wednesday at 5:30 at Newburgh Park. And with that, all my other stuff was mentioned as well, I think, so, I think we're good.
Plaque dedication.
I'm sorry, what, Jeremy?
Can I report? I left it for you, but.
Oh, yeah, you did, I was scattered today, I hate Monday meetings. This Friday at 10 o'clock at the, like, kind of behind Ready Rent's, I have the auction yard, that little area there at the head of the Dennis Went Memorial Trail, they are going to do the plaque of dedication, that was a Leadership Fortuna project, and sponsored by Alan Baird, he paid to actually have the plaque finished, I've seen it, they're going to install it on one of the rocks at the head of the trail, and so, if everyone would join us there at 10 o'clock, we're going to do that as well. Anything else I'm forgetting, guys? Prompt me. See, we're a team, they helped me. All right, so with that, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.